The third, our legislative meeting, if we could please introduce ourselves.
Chrissy Rachel, clerk.
Leslie Herbie, clerk to the board.
Alicia Reese, county commissioner, vice president of the board.
Good afternoon, I'm county commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, county administrator.
James Sayer, legal counsel for the board.
Thank you all, and I'm Stephanie Summer Dumas, president of the board, glad to be here. We're gonna move forward with our items on the agenda as we always do. Silent prayer, and then after that, if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would ask that we have special prayers for, there's a lot of violence going on in our county and our city around the world. But if we can specifically, you know, pray for our county and the violence that's going on with young people and just violence in general on our streets and in the homes, so I certainly would appreciate that, and at the same time, I wanted to thank all of those who have prayed for me, that it could be a different picture, I would not be sitting here. And so I thank, thank everyone for the prayers that were brought out for me, so if we could have a silent prayer. Amen.
Amen.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second, Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much, and we have public comments as our next order on the agenda, Kelly Price, welcome.
Thank you so much. President Dumas, Madam Commissioners, thank you ladies for allowing me to speak today. Again, Commissioner, in your absence, I mentioned that I voted for you, and prayerfully, you will be elected or reelected because it will be a grave mistake if Christopher Smitherman is elected to the county commission. Today, I want to discuss a countywide selective enforcement issue, an issue with cruel and unusual selective enforcement tactics with criminal implications, starting in Cincinnati. Under the Cranley regime, former Cincinnati City Council member Christopher Smitherman, as the Chair of the Law and Public Safety Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee, worked with members of the CPD to use selective enforcement tactics in criminal in civil and criminal matters, to not only seize residential and commercial property, but also to criminalize, cripple, and cause deaths to citizens. Some of the city law enforcement agents, agents involved included, they used the pivot model, so there was specific territory, and the territory that I sent you information on is 1900 Freeman Avenue in the West End. It included Casey Kreider, Mark Longworth, Eric Vogelpool, Daniel Carter, Detective Rube, interim police chief, Lieutenant Colonel Teresa Thiege was also aware of the situation, we made complaints to the Citizens Complaint Authority, and we also, there was also investigations that were ignored. While he was the president of the NAACP, he transferred titles illegally, and so he was also working with a business associate of John Cranley, Matthew Stevens, who is a known drug dealer and the leader of the local Midwestern chapter of Locosa Nostra, which is a highly organized Italian-American criminal society and organized crime group. He produces fake Percocets that are killing people. Rob Portman mentioned that people are dying from fake pills, and this gentleman is producing those pills in his laboratory in Blue Ash. So I would like a forensic investigation of titles, because there's title fraud going on with a company called Yolo Investments. It's You Only Live Once Investments, if you look at the amount of property that they've acquired, and price heal is unconscionable. And Mr. Smitherman, Christopher Finney, KMK Law Firm, and so many others are involved, and some judges, so I'll send you email communication in this regard. And prayerfully, Dinko Lacker won't get back in, because he is a part of it as well, so, again, I'll send you an email referencing this. I did give you a list, I mean, a host of documentation, sixty-five pages to be exact. And so if we could schedule time to meet to talk about this, if you could be of assistance in helping me to launch a Department of Justice investigation, the world would love you, not only the county, because people have died as a result of their actions, so I'll reach out via email. Thank, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, and we have your information, I'm sure the clerk has it, if not, she has it.
Yes.
And then we'll look at the best way to tackle.
Okay.
What you have brought up.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much, and I did testify in the city of Cincinnati's Budget and Finance Committee meeting, as well as the Public Governance and Safety Committee to this effect as well, so I look forward to hearing from someone.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move right along to comments and motions, I'll start out. Put my glasses on, since we won't be back after, we will not be here on this coming Tuesday, because it's Election Day, I'll start out with that, and we're just asking everybody to vote. The hours are very flexible for people that are working during the day, or the evening, or whatever, they've, the Board of Election has really set out a very flexible schedule, you can go on the weekends, you can go in the evening till seven o'clock for a while, so we're asking. So we're just asking that everybody vote, and I'll move on from there. Hamilton County, I'd like to, we have a press release that's coming out once it's approved. Hamilton County is going to launch Operation Green Light in support of local veterans, and just a little bit of it, with Veterans Day holiday approaching, Hamilton County is announcing that county buildings will be illuminated green, November the seventh through the thirteenth, as part of Operation Green Light, to support veterans. Operation Green Light is a new national collaborative initiative of the National Association of Counties, NACO, to shine a light of appreciation on military veterans, as well as raise awareness about the unique challenges faced by many veterans, and the resources that are available at the county, state, and federal level to assist veterans and their families, and we will be illuminating the courthouse and eight hundred Broadway, the Time Star Building, which was the home of juvenile court, so really excited about that. Veterans, we just make sure as a board that we do all we can to help our veterans, there will be a veteran that will be coming in next week to receive a proclamation from us, but they are always a focus for us, and we want to continue to keep them a focus, not only for this month, but from, for every month of the year, so that's all that I will have at this point, Vice President Reese.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President, and we'll be happy to support that resolution, supporting our veterans. Had a couple of things, first, I had a chance to attend Housing Opportunities Made Equal press conference this week. Commissioner Dreehouse was there as well, I had a chance to speak along with Vice Mayor Jamichelle Livin Kearney, and talking about the gap in homeownership, and they have an initiative to help increase black homeownership. And there's a number of issues, I mean, there's still insurance redlining, in terms of being able to afford houses, disparities in appraisals, loan rates, those kind of things, and one of the things I liked that they have, they have initiative to help increase it, but also some other ideas on, one, having a report card. I think that is critical, because a lot of times we say we want to do these things, but how do you measure it? So having a report card is one of the things, they talk about a number of other things that they think will help shut down the disparity, or at least cut down on the widening of the disparity. And so I'd like for us, there's a number of organizations that are partnering with this. I'm gonna come forward with a resolution to ask that our county also be a part of this, so that we can see the information that they have available, they have some ideas, we are getting ready to award a contract to someone to deal with affordable housing, and we want to make sure these components are looked at and are part of. So our next meeting, next Thursday, I will at least bring a resolution to introduce those ideas that they have for the administration to include and take a look and see how we can, are these things that we can do from a policy standpoint, as well as support the report card that would come out. So wanted to just give a heads up for that, and I know Commissioner Dumas, you were out with COVID, so you weren't, we're not able to join us, but certainly we'll make sure that you get that information as well, because I think it would be great for us, and I think it's on point with our board and where we're trying to go, we're looking for new ways, new ideas, how we can close these gaps, and also have more affordability. My next comments deal with this Tuesday, we had two presentations, and, well, before I get to the Tuesday presentations, let me just say that there's been a lot around the Bengal Stadium, our People Stadium, with naming rights. And, you know, we have, of course, we have executive sessions and those kind of things, and I want to recommend that we cut down on those executive sessions going forward as it relates to the Bengal contracts. This is a very dicey situation, taxpayers are wondering what's going on, and they're seeing things, and let me say, it's definitely nothing personal, because you all know I am a huge sports fan, and I've been with the Bengals when, when we were down at the bottom, and, but we're looking at it not from a fan perspective now, we're looking at it from a business perspective, and I want to say that I'm very disappointed, and I will say this to everyone, including our administrator. I was told, I don't know what everybody else was told, I was told that we didn't have any information, and that we were waiting. We had read about it like everybody else, about Paycor, we weren't even told who the company was. We were asked that, you know, let's make sure we don't be negative to our Paycor, we're not negative to our Paycor, because we're one of the highest clients of Paycor. Hamilton County Government is one of the biggest clients of Paycor. So taxpayer money that we manage and we put through payroll goes to Paycor, so they, number one, we're a client of Paycor. But then we were asked to say, well, let's don't say anything, we're looking and we're waiting, and we're trying to get it together, but we have to say something. We're elected by the people, and so we, as board members, we should know what's going on. This is a publicly funded stadium, now we can't be public when all the bills come. And we just did some things with screens, and there'll be another bill, eight million dollars for wifi, and all these things, so when it comes to the bills, y'all in charge, the public, but then when it comes to signing these contracts and money and naming rights, all of a sudden, we private. So when the money come in, we private, when the bills come due, we public. We have to have a different relationship. Yes, we want to keep a team here, we want a partnership. When the people went to vote for it, they voted for it, and it was a good thing that they voted for, to build two stadiums. But there's been other things added that they didn't vote for, and this contract, this is, they, they were good with the, going to the ballot, but they got screwed when they got behind the scenes on the contract, now none of us was here when this happened. So we've come with a clean slate, but I'm saying, we cannot be behind the scenes and screw the taxpayers, this is what happened to the tax, they got screwed behind the scenes, this was not on the ballot. Naming rights was not on the ballot, luxury boxes was not on the ballot. Paying for all of the upkeep, all of these different things that's in this, these pages, this wasn't on the ballot, this got done behind the scenes. And this is when the citizens felt they got screwed. So we're trying to make sure, and I don't want to talk for everybody, I'm gonna talk for me, I want to make sure that the people come out with a win-win. There's gotta be a win for the taxpayers, as well as a win for the Bengals. And we can't have these type of deals, and then we go into, Mr. Aludo, I can't go to executive sessions, we got to be out in open, because now they control the narrative. The newspaper says, I didn't receive no letter on August, in August, but they said that our administration did. So I'm walking around saying, no, we ain't got no letter from them, we ain't heard back, and, and you got a letter. So then the people in the public get to say, well, hold on, and they were very strategic, we gonna release the letter to the media. And now here we are, looking like, well, what are they down here for, they don't know what's going on, no, we're the landlords, we gonna start knowing what's going on. No more behind the scenes whispering, and we trying, come on out in open, this is paid for by the people, so it's got to be out in open. It's gotta be out in open. And this is too serious, and then we come in, we get presentations about what the Ginsler Report is, I ain't even met Ginsler. You bring a person working for Ginsler, I want to meet Ginsler. And you bring Ginsler in, and we get it a couple of minutes before the meeting, and they got a big, half a billion dollars, and the, and the report is incomplete. We, it is not just here with the Bengals, we got to change the way we do business down here. The people elect us, we gotta get on there, we got an election going now, they elect us, and then after they elect us, here come all these other people, unelected, representing organizations that have an unelected board, and they come down here and, and say they got bold ideas, and they need a whole bunch of money, and we don't even know who on the board. So Madam President, one of the things I'm saying, when you come before us, I want to know who your board is, put it up on there, everybody should know, if you want public money. So I'm just very, I'm not happy about that, that in the papers got us looking like, well, you got a letter, maybe the administrator got it, I didn't get it. A letter from Clark Schaefer Hackett and Company, I didn't, I Googled it, I didn't get nothing from them. And it said that we don't get one dime, I told y'all we wasn't getting a dime, because of how this is written. And we're looking to reduce the cost ourselves. We want to be a deal that keeps the cost down on the taxpayer. So I wanted to bring that up, because I was not happy, and, and, and next thing you know, it's a big old headline, and Hamilton County taxpayers won't get any money from Paycor Stadium naming rights. I've been told you that, and then we got a contract that we ain't even seen, they ain't gonna tell us, we can't see it. They gonna negotiate our building, but don't tell us nothing about it, because they're private. I'm gonna say it again, you can't be public when the bills are due. And then private, when you go do business negotiations to bring in money. We don't know what's in there, and the way this is written, if we keep this same language, the taxpayers can end up owing money on a naming rights deal, because there's no cap on fulfillment cost. They got us paying out of our so-called thirty percent, luxury boxes, tickets, we don't know how many tickets they promised Paycor, how many luxury boxes they promised Paycor, how much advertising and marketing they promised Paycor, at the end of the day, we could be owing some money. And then to do a deal beyond your contract, we do not have a contract today with a tenant, the Bengals, past twenty twenty-six. They don't went and did a deal that goes beyond twenty-six. And we ain't got no contract. Now, we've got to have a different arrangement down here, I don't know what's been done years before all of us got here, and it seems to be, they come here, it seems to be a pattern, they come down here, they bring these big ideas, they claim it's bold, and at the end of the day, the taxpayer is paying for eighty and ninety percent of the cost, and then they tell us they ain't got but fifteen minutes to make a decision, and then just like Covington Center, they do a drawing, release it to the press, don't tell us nothing, don't want us to have no input, but by the way, you gonna pay for it, and then it's all out in the press, do you like it or not, take it or leave it. We got to get rid of the take it or leave it personality down here. We are not the ATM, we are not the rubber stamp, we are not the, the tellers at the bank, where you come in, hand us a bill, and the only thing we're elected to do is to tell you, would you like it in fives, would you like it in tens, how would you like your money back? No. The citizens have elected us, if they wanted them, they would have elected them. So even with three CDC, who's on the board, we don't even know who on the board, who are the hidden figures? Who are these hidden figures, that's making the decision, two hundred million dollars to bring us this Covington Center, and I've been in this business with Covington, I'm going to Covington Center now, I've been in this business, and I find it disrespectful, I'm one of the few people elected, whoever really brought big Covingtons in, multiple. I'm one of the few elected that actually expanded a Covington Center before, that's still around, who created a CFA? Who actually voted for three CDC to ever be formed, and even come to Cincinnati, and they were supposed to stay in over the run, they were not supposed to come salvage over the run. That was the original premise, but to come in here, after you done went to the newspaper, it's already in the Business Courier, you buying the, the Wex Garage, it's already in the Inquirer, the, the drawings and everything, and then we say, oh, well, we'd like to, yes, invite you, no. We're representing the taxpayers, and if you want us to pay for it, vote on it, be responsible for it, then we want to have some input before it goes out, before it goes out. We spent thirty-nine million dollars buying the Millennium, and maybe it was the right thing, I don't know, we wanted to get rid of Millennium. But now thirty-nine million dollars later, you gonna bring me some picnic tables with some, with some, uh, what are those things that you put up, some umbrellas, and then say you gonna get a trickle-down refund by sales tax. You say that the hotels that, where the finalists say they got to have this picnic area, I need it in writing. That they said that they wouldn't build this hotel if we don't expand the Covington Center to outdoor area where we don't make a dime. You then come with a funding model, you come here with a funding model, and I apologize for taking time, taking time, because they throwing all this stuff at us at the same time. They didn't give us a break, it's all coming at the same time, and people are out here talking about, well, you guys don't know what's going on, and you guys are gonna give them five hundred million for a hotel, and two hundred million dollars for a Covington Center, and, so I want to straighten it out. Now, Covington Center, and I don't know any hotel, say, I ain't coming, because you ain't got no outdoor area, and we got Fountain Square right down the street that still got the tables and the umbrellas. We gotta write two blocks down. I've booked Covingtons that said that was sufficient. So I need to see from the hotel myself in writing, Mr. Aludo, that they're saying they can't build a hotel unless we have this closing of the street, and these tables, and these umbrellas. Because I don't see how we spend thirty-nine million dollars in debt with interest, and we go back to the voters and say we ain't getting no money off of it, except for free entertainment over there. It's not a good business, ma'am. Not a good business, ma'am, and then when I ask, can you look at something else arrogantly, no, this is what it is, no, we, no, no, no. You don't vote, you don't face the voters, neither does your board, now, I don't even know who your board is, who are the hidden figures on your board? All of these boards that come here, I want to know the hidden figures, before we go doing business with them, the people and the taxpayers should know. So these are the things I want to take back, and I don't like these five-second, here it is, let's hurry up, PowerPoint, we always, we want to make it convenient for you, we ain't trying to make it convenient for you, we trying to get all the information, because the people will hold us accountable. Lastly, on the funding model that was presented to us, for the hotel, and for this expanded space that's outdoors. Now, in our CFA, I think we're pretty good, you diversified it, we've got some debt, this is, comes from your hotel tax. If you go up on the hotel tax, at that time, we were the largest tax in the state, one of the largest hotel taxes in the country. That does, that is important to conventions, your tax rate on hotels, so we just, oh man, just make a big tax, and we'll just get it from the outside people, no. Covingtons do look at this, so we got a high hotel rate, what we did, we got the debt on Sharonville, we got the debt on Covington Center expansion downtown. We also have the debt on the Millennium, thirty-nine million dollars, but we got a little more wiggle room. The city of Cincinnati, well, not this group, but the group before them, they gave most all, they put all their future money mostly going to FC. This board didn't, y'all, y'all said we gonna do two different garages, and you were diversified, so we have a little more money. My point is, how do you bring us a funding model where we have more money to deal with, and the city got less money, because they done gave all their money to FC mostly, their future earnings, to their debt? It's almost like I got two dollars and fifty cents in my bank account, and someone else got a million dollars in their bank account, and then I go to them and say, hey, let's have a joint account, and we both will have ATM cards, and we both can use it. We not doing that, so we've got to make sure, and there's other projects that the county may want to do, out in Blue Ash, it might be something out in Forest Park, might be some other things, and I want to make sure that our funding model does not stranglehold us to being able to do those things, I think we've been smart in the past on this CFA dollars, our side, and I want to keep our side the same, don't come in here, you ain't got but two dollars, and we got possibly a million dollars, and then you say, let's come together with a joint account. It's not even, so I'm concerned about the funding model, of Madam President, I had to get that out, because it's all over the news, everybody's running all over the news, you didn't get a dime out of the Bengals, well, that's in their contract. You said you didn't know nothing, and now we found out that y'all got, so we didn't, at least I know I didn't get it, I can't speak for everybody, I didn't get it. But I already knew by reading the language, we weren't gonna get anything, now the next question is, why would we go beyond twenty twenty-six contract? They got a thirteen-plus-year deal, and the, the thing ends at twenty twenty-six, and even when you go to the stadium, I don't see a big sign say, welcome to Hamilton County, I see it at the Reds, but I don't see it at the Bengals. So I like to see that up, on behalf of the taxpayers who own the place. Those are the things that I wanted to put, but I hope that we come with a new attitude, that you can't come running down here fifteen minutes, and you got two hundred million for this, and five hundred million for that, and a billion for this, and then we come, and we ask about thirty percent for homeowners, and we come and recommend that real low, how you recommending that low, and you recommending these projects high? Now, you'll say, well, these are two sets of money, well, the half a cent does not have to be restricted, as Jeff Aludo said, the half a cent is a sales tax, it really is in the general fund. But we decided to put it in a restricted area for that area, now, nobody went and voted to build no garages. We added that, nobody voted for no tailgate space, that was all added, all these things on the riverfront, the banks was not on the ballot. So technically, that half cent could go to a general market, but we've been smart to try to keep it over here, because we got this, this lease before we got here, that's got our hands tied, but in a minute, we'll have a new lease, and all of us will be here, and we will be judged by the new lease, so, wanted to say that, I, I didn't have that planned until I seen all this media stuff going, and I wanted to make sure that the record is straight, it's clear, I know where I'm at on thirty percent, but we still have to December first, so no decision is being made right now, but I am for thirty percent, it is in my budget thing that I gave to the administration, and hopefully we'll be able to move forward on it, but I do want to say, it won't be decided until December, so we do have time to negotiate that, so, Madam President, those are the things that I had, I wanted to highlight that, but I really want us to get into a better situation. It came down here, said, we don't own no property, and then on the PowerPoint, we getting ready about a Wex Garage. Then you ask, well, can the garage revenue go toward helping with this, oh, no, we can't help with that, no, 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 no money goes to that. I mean, come on, that, that's, that's silly and ridiculous, and I hope that we have a new relationship, and I hope, Mr. Aludo, you will tell the people before they get down here, that we got to have a different type of relationship, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, just have a couple of things today, wanted to mention that I went to the CIA lunch, that they're a huge partner for us. We utilize their services when we were doing relief for folks that are renters, and so went to the lunch, they talked about the work that they're doing, Odell Owens was the keynoter, so it was, it was very well attended, and I appreciated the invitation to that. The other thing, I represented the commission at an event for Julie Heath, who is the Executive Director of the Economic Center at UC, she She um, had a lot to do with uh, having financial literacy taught in schools. Uh, she was the one I remember, Commissioner Reese, I don't know if you met with her, but I did when I was a state representative. And she had this great idea about teaching kids about financial literacy. And um, Lou Terhar and and folks in the Democratic Caucus worked together to make sure that bill got passed into law. So now we have financial literacy in schools. A large part of that is due to Julie Heath. And so she's retiring. Um, she's also done some analyses for us as we've asked for UC to do some analysis on some of our policies. And so she will be missed. Um, she's a great person. And so I um, offered her a proclamation on behalf of the commission the other night. Um, when she, they had her celebration. Um, and then lastly, I was going to talk about voting. I know it's already been discussed, but um. We, there are so many options right now for people to vote. So just as a reminder. Um, there's the mail in, but those have to be postmarked by really tomorrow. And uh, there is a recommendation that either you go into the post office and make sure it gets postmarked, or you just drop it in the drop box over at the Board of Elections. To make sure that that ballot gets counted. Um, and then there's of course, the voting in person, which is happening now. Uh, through the week, through the weekend, both Saturday and Sunday hours and Monday hours. Uh, before the election. And then of course, on Election Day, the polls are open from six thirty AM to seven thirty PM. So lots of opportunities for people to still cast their ballots. And so I just wanted to remind folks of that. Um, because tis the season, right, to go out. And I think I'm taking my mom tomorrow. To go early vote at the Board of Elections. I've warned him that we're coming down. Um, and my, you know, it's, it's always very festive down there. I know both of you have been down there. Um, it's, people are celebrating the um, the, the voting that we're doing, that everybody gets an opportunity to vote. So it's, it's kind of a fun season for those of us, especially that are in elected office and close to this stuff. Uh, but I want to encourage everybody to um, you know, cast your ballot. Uh, it's your right to vote and you should exercise your right to vote. That's all I've got.
Thank you so much. Um, before I move to uh, Jeff Aludo, our county administrator, I really have to make a few comments about um. Vice President Reese, um, and her um. Frustration because I'm also frustrated as it relates to what we know as a board, what we don't know, uh, what other people know. And it's uh, to me, it's even deeper than that, but a lack of communication and a lack of respect for this uh, board. So I totally agree with you. I've scribbled all over the place, but I want um, people to know that. No matter who comes before us, the Bengals, some, someone about the headquarters hotel. Um, we all protect the rights of the Hamilton County residents and we make. The final decision. If the majority of this board does not agree. With what's being brought before us. And a lot of times we don't get all the information to make. The greatest uh, decision, but we ask for more and more information. Some people are very resistant to giving us what we need. Uh, but um, it's, it's very frustrating, especially as you were saying, when they come to us for the money. But they don't want us to ask questions and they don't want to give us all their information. If we're not satisfied, I don't care how pretty the pictures are. Or how great the plans are, it's not going to go through. So I just want to let our residents know as you look at those big numbers and they are big numbers, a two hundred million for the. Uh, the headquarter hotel, I just think that's the beginning. Uh, of the plan, but to let you know, if we don't think it meets our needs and your needs and it benefits our taxpayers. Uh, and there's no majority, it will not uh, be going through. So. Just want you to be rest assured, if it doesn't look good, doesn't smell good, doesn't feel good, it won't go through. So um, that's all I'll say about that, but I did want to indicate since I left this, I'll just ask an administration for some follow up. As I talked about COVID hits not being available uh, in the um, black neighborhoods and out in the west side um. At Forest Park, Mount Healthy, please do a follow up, uh, whatever that restriction is about, drive through libraries. I'd like to know where we are on that. And then I read this morning about the Price Hill Cemetery, I think of Potter's. Yeah, Potter's Field. They're doing some upkeep there. And I remember talking to administration when I went to Union Baptist, one of the first black cemeteries and the uh, talk about. Uh, they were saying sewage coming through there and I, I need a follow up on that to see. Uh, where we are on that. And also this morning I had a um, conversation, phone conversation with the mayor. Mayor Afteb as relates to the headquarter hotel and where we are. Of course, I could not make any commitments um, uh, for this board, but. Talked about where we were from uh, our discussion with Leaper and that we're. Uh, continuing to investigate where we are in the situation. And did not make any commitments on monies or anything like that, because as you were saying, we've already put a lot of money into the millennium and demolition and all that. But I did have a conversation with him this morning. So that's all I had. So County Administrator Jeff Aludo.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, just a couple of, got a um, couple of comments and then. Um, there's one by leave on here, but Madam President, I'll defer to, to you on, on this. Um. This is, uh, there is a, uh, there's a Clean Ohio Conservation Grant application that came through as a by leave. There's also another one. Both of them are, are looking for letters of support from the board. We, we have one on the consent agenda that, that came through staff. Uh, we have another one, I think that came directly through to commission offices. Uh, that staff did not, um, because it didn't go through staff channels, we haven't had the chance to review it. Um, uh, there's nothing that we know of that, that would uh, run counter to the board approving it. It is, we haven't had, really had a chance to see it. So. Um, I'll defer to you on, on that, on that particular by leave item. Um, just a couple of comments, so. Um, on some positive notes, I just wanted to let the board know that. Uh, tonight, I believe at the uh, the twenty thirty just district, there is a. Uh, what's called the twenty thirty district, which focuses on environmental and, and uh, energy conservation. Um, initiatives uh, for partners in the greater Cincinnati area. Uh, and our uh, facilities department is going to be recognized uh, tonight for their. Uh, contributions and for their, all their initiatives as it relates to energy conservation. Um, uh, savings, savings of energy, electricity, water, gas, et cetera. Uh, so I want to, and the board is over the past couple of months, heard a couple of presentations on that. Uh, so I want to, uh, number one, congratulate the facilities department, Ralph Linney in particular, who I think is going to be over there to uh. Uh, accept the war, the award on behalf of, of, of the county and of the facilities department. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Ralph. Um, secondly, uh, want to give a, a kudos to Ryan Shoemaker up in the uh, uh, planning and, and development department. Um, I receive um, uh, comments and, and, and kudos from, from the public uh, on a frequent basis about, about county staff. I've, I've never had one before that said, uh, the following. So I guess the background here is that Ryan. Um, had helped a developer through, through a process and went just way over and above and beyond the call in terms of. Uh, fielding calls and helping this developer through the process. Um, but I've never had one say. Um, uh, see, where is it here? He said, because of Ryan's exceptional service. I've become such a huge fan of the planning and development department that I don't even mind paying the permit fee. Uh, I, I don't think I've ever heard that said, so I just, I, you know, you got it, you got to call it out when you get something like that. So I just wanted to. Uh, congratulate Ryan for all the, the great work up there. Also, just a note to the board, we have uh, six new dispatchers coming through the nine one one uh, training program. So. Um, we know how we are um, uh, struggling with staffing uh, the nine one one center as we are in a lot of places where we have critical operations. Uh, whether it's corrections officers, juvenile corrections officers, uh, probation officers, et cetera. Uh, but to get six new dispatchers up there is good news. Uh, and we'll continue that progress uh, with, with future recruitment classes. And finally, congratulations uh, to Jasmine Rice up at the nine one one center who just made it through the full training program. So. Uh, we're making progress in getting, in getting staff and call takers um, into the, into the queue so that we can uh, uh. Uh, reduce the, the burden on the, on the staff that, that is up there. Um, just a, a couple of quick comments. I'm happy to follow up with the board in more depth. Uh, just on uh, the, the naming rights conversation. And uh, as I know, as the board is aware, I can't control uh, what the specific headlines are, but I do just want to let the board know that. Uh, fundamentally, um, regardless of, of uh, headlines or, or what's been reported. Um, the, the county has not received, as we have told the board, the county and uh, I believe President Summer Dumas, to your point. The county has not received. The information that it requires to understand where we are from a financial perspective. Uh, on, on the naming rights agreement that was entered into between the, the team and Paycor. So. Uh, we have received um, uh, notification from, from the team that we do not. Uh, participate financially, but we have not yet had the ability to examine ourselves, the. Uh, the financial terms and conditions of that agreement to, to verify that. So I believe there was a report yesterday that. Uh, the county had the opportunity to review for a significant amount of time. Um, the, the naming rights agreement and there, while there is truth to that statement. Um, the, the entirety of, of the story is that we did not have the ability to examine the financial terms and conditions, which is exactly what it is that we need to see. Uh, in order to confirm whether or not the county does financially participate. So I'm happy to follow up more with the board on that. Uh, but just as uh. Vice President Reese, uh, Commissioner, President Summer Dumas, you both had mentioned. Um, just the, the, the ambiguity of the story that's out there and who knew, who knows what and what does the county know? Um, at this point in time, we still have not received that information to ver, so that we can verify and report to the board. Uh, that we uh, do or do not participate in that. Um, uh, or that. Um, uh, or that we know the financial terms and conditions in their entirety. So I just, I can follow up more with the board on that, happy to. Uh, but just to set that portion of the, of the story straight, I wanted to make sure the board uh, heard that publicly. So. Um, that concludes my comments. Again, there is one. Uh, additional by leave item on for the Clean Ohio Conservation Fund, but Madam President, I will defer to you in terms of the tee up of that item. I'm happy to, to chime in on it. And again, we don't know anything. Uh, specifically that would recommend against the, the approval of that. And in fact, I think. Uh, this particular organization has been before the board in the past with. Um, recommendations on Clean Ohio Fund grant applications that the board has approved letters of support for. Um, but uh, um, I would just defer to the board in terms of the raising of that issue. That would conclude my comments, Madam President.
And thank you. Uh, before we go to the by leave item, uh, Vice President Reese, for you.
Yes, I, I just wanted to make sure, um. I just want to make sure, Mr. Aludo. I don't want to find out the paper got anything that. The county received and I didn't see it. Now, maybe others have, I didn't see it. And I, I agree with you. I don't go to the news to get the news because we're supposed to be knowing more than the news people elected us. But I was just disappointed that there was something came through in August and I don't remember receiving it, saying that we don't get one dime. So I just think every single thing, I don't want to see the, I gotta, you know, I said that with three CDC, don't. Come showing us a PowerPoint, you already done went to the business courier saying that you gonna sell the garage. We shouldn't be the last to find out. Now, if you're saying that. You never received anything and they're telling not the truth. Then that's a different situation. But if it's saying that. We did receive, meaning not the board, but the administration or our lawyers, maybe it wasn't you, maybe it was the lawyers. I want to know everything. Because people want, I can't be walking around here and they say, what's going on? I, I don't know. I'm not looking for the inquiry to tell me what's going on. We're telling inquiry if we want to, what's going on. But I don't want to go and find out. And then I know what you're saying, tomatoes, tomatoes. Well, they didn't give the whole financial thing, but they gave a letter. That I didn't see that said confirming that you getting zero. And that was in August and I think we're in November. So. I don't know if they didn't give it to you or the people you hired, it, you know, on behalf of the taxpayer, money didn't give it to you. I don't know. But I'm putting on record, I don't want to find out about anything. That comes back and they say, well, they're handing me a document that's been sent to my county administration and say, here's what we sent. We don't want to do that either because again, people are. Asking us and then we're asked that, well, don't say no, we trying to, no, we saying everything. We want it out in the public. We want it. Uh, you know, we're gonna play this game, then we need to have everything. We shouldn't wait on public records. We should keep everything public. So everybody can see it and not wait on the news to interpret it. So that's, that's my issue.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And I think, uh, so to your point, number one. Um, I, I think it, it does bode for regular updates to the board in public session, if that's what the board would like. And I think that would help there. There are things that are reported to the board in executive session, other things that are reported in, in public session and maybe to do those more frequently. Uh, in public session so that we can report out comprehensively on what's been received, what is not happy, happy to do that just at, at the board's discretion. So I'd be, I'd be happy to do that. Uh, per your comment.
Okay, um. And I have to. Sort of uh, speak to what you were just saying. Um, the, the requests don't stop. From the Bengals, uh, we continue to provide upgrades, uh, because I know some of that is in our contract and an agreement. But the request did not stop. And so, um. But if we say, we don't hear you, we can't hear, it reminds me of a commercial, can you hear me now? And they're not answering the phones. I mean. And so I have to say the, I do not understand trying to wrap my head around the level of arrogance. Um. That is going on right now as it relates to um. Our relationship, the board's relationship with the Bengals. And I think John London was asking, do you think this poisons the well? No, it doesn't. We'll move forward and we'll work together and we're partnering, we're collaborating and all that, but. I just don't understand and I'm, uh, you know, trying to make sense out of nonsense, I guess, um. How a entity like that, with us being the landlord, could have such a level of arrogance. And I don't know if it's. From past patterns, I think you mentioned that before, maybe they've. Been that way before, but we're not having it on this board. And if we don't get what we need, we cannot move forward and we definitely want to win, win for everybody. So I'll just move forward on that. Um. As we look at the by leave, um, Commissioner, uh, Drew House, I don't know if, I thought I heard you had something to do with the. Clean Ohio. I know Tim Burke was leading the charge as it relates to the grant application. Clean Ohio Conservation Fund Grant is a great. Uh, grant and we don't want to miss that opportunity. So am I wrong about you being involved?
Well, he, he contacted all three of us. I do have the letter uh, in front of me from. The Tim requesting that we pass. It's, it's just a resolution of support for a Clean Ohio. Fund grant for a project at Wooden Shoe Hollow. Um, and, and as Jeff mentioned, there's another one on the agenda also, number nine. Uh, similarly, where they're asking for a support letter for a grant that's coming out of the state of Ohio. So. This one, and I'm happy to give a little bit of background here because I've got the letter in front of me. Um. It's to purchase. A unique piece of property in the historic Wooden Shoe Hollow area of Wynton Hills. Cardinal has reached an agreement with the owner for ten plus acres. On that site that would allow Cardinal to purchase the property at a reduced price. Six acres would become permanent green space owned by Cardinal and Cardinal would hold an agricultural easement over the remainder of the property. Allowing it to continue to be used for historical agricultural purposes. And so that is the purpose for the request to the Clean Ohio. Grant uh, organization from this group to get the application. So they're asking for a letter of support.
Thank you very much. Uh, Vice President Reese, did you have any comments?
No comment. I support it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Uh, we will, and I was going to ask you, Jeff, the twenty thirty district is a unique name. Uh, just a, just general summary of where that came from.
Yeah, I don't know where the name came from, Madam President. So Holly, I don't know if you have any information on where the specific name of the, I assume it relates to the goal by twenty thirty of this.
Um, great question. Thank you. And um, if I recall correctly, this is focused on downtown buildings. To reduce uh, certain um, energy levels by, I believe it is twenty thirty. So I think it's the, the, the goal for when they want to reach their energy reduction collectively.
All right. Thank you so much. So we will move forward. We have um, only consent agenda items today. I'm going to go through a few of them. Um, and item one is a resolution authorizing the purchase of one Ford Explorer as a replacement. On behalf of the Hamilton County Communication Center. Item two was pulled, I just want to uh, note that it has zero dollars, but it was pulled because there was money involved. Uh, in item two and we needed to, to better evaluate uh, the use of that money and whether or not we wanted. To approve it. I'm sure it'll be coming up very soon on our next agenda. Item three is a budget adjustment for telephone system support. Um, sheriff gas lane and security system cost, coroner stadiums payroll costs, job and family services, employment services, funding. And an addiction response grant extension for one point five million. Under human uh, resources, there's a resolution approving and journalizing the collective bargain agreement. And we thank everybody who works. Uh, to make that happen between Hamilton County and the Hamilton County sheriffs and the Fraternal Order of Police. Representing the captains in the sheriff's office. And then JFS, a resolution appointing two members. To serve on the Child Abuse and Neglect Regional Prevention Council of Ohio Children's Trust Fund. Item seven, a resolution authorizing agreement between Legal Aid Society and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners on behalf. Of the Department of Job and Family Services for Consulting Services, nine hundred and forty five thousand dollars. Um, item eight, resolution authorizing a MOU between Children's Hospital Medical Center doing business as Cincinnati. Children's Hospital Medical Center, Cordata Healthcare Innovations. Children's Hospital Medical Center, Cordata Healthcare Innovations and Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners on behalf of the Hamilton County Department of Job and Family Services for Data Sharing. And item nine, we talked a little bit about that earlier resolution in support of round seventeen Clean Ohio Conservation Fund Grant Application to Acquire Rapid Run Property. And at this time, I'll open it up for any discussion on any of these consent items. Vice President Reese.
Uh, no discussion at this time, Madam President.
Okay. No comments. Okay. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve items one. Do we have to approve pulling or not? No. So items one and three and five uh, through nine, make a motion to approve those.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Uh, we also have an executive session. I scribbled all over. So I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to RC Section one twenty one point twenty two G three to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning the subject of pending litigation.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you.